Your kind. I'll keep that in mind. All right, we move on to the student report.
Good evening, everyone. Student Council is planning for the upcoming Mini Thon event, which for those who don't know, Thon is something that takes place and raises money for cancer, and we do a smaller version of that here in the school. We've done, I don't remember when we started doing it, but last year was my first year being a part of it. It was very, very successful. The majority of students went to it and raised a lot of money. And so we're doing it again this year, and we're working on finalizing those plans. So what we did last year, we had different games and tournaments and sports and stuff, such happening in the south gym. And that was where, that was kind of the lobby, the hub area, that's where everyone was. And so we're planning on doing a similar thing down there, having, organizing teams and having different sports games, being officiated by different faculty members throughout the night. So that's, that'll be fun. We have different committees on student council. Some different student council members head each committee, and then we have a larger Mini Thon committee filled with anyone in the high school that would like to be a part of it. We have freshmen through seniors being part of that Mini Thon committee that otherwise wouldn't be a part of the student council. We have food committee, technology, sports, chaperones, decorations, and stuff like that that we're working on. We've made some good progress with that so far. Some of the, some of the sports we have are cornhole, sorry. Aside from the sports, we have other rooms outside of the gym where we have games such as cornhole, ping pong, pool, et cetera, that we're working on, seeing what we can get, having people bring in like a pool table or something and seeing what we can find. And then we're also working on finding different chaperones for the event because the event is from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So it's kind of hard to find people that want to be up all night. So we split the, the night in half.
Past my bedtime.
For most of the other teachers, we split it in half, and you sign up for the first half and the second half. You just have to be there, supervise students in the different rooms throughout the night. We have, oftentimes we do movies in the auditorium. We have a projector and we have movies on the big screen which students seem to like. And it just seems to be a really successful, successful event that we hold. So this year's Mini Thon will be held on March 24th to the 25th. Like I said, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And we're working on getting all that stuff finalized. So that's the main thing we're working on at the moment. But we just finished finalizing our plans for the Winter Formal Dance, happening on January 28th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. That is something the student council voted to have this year. We didn't have one last year, but the turnout for homecoming was so good, and there seemed to be a lot of positive, positive results from that. So we thought it might be good to have another one, and so student council voted to have a Winter Formal Dance, which passed, and so we're having that. We're having, hired Danny Ziegler as the DJ. And apparently we've had him for different events before. He's, everyone likes him, he does a good job. So we're hoping he will try for us again. And same with Mini Thon, we have different committees to provide all the decorations and lightings and equipment and all that stuff. We've, we estimate about 300 people attending the dance because that was the, about the turnout for homecoming. So we think, give or take a few will come again to Winter Formal. So we'll be selling tickets the week of the dance, and we will be allowing guests from other schools to come in. You just need to get a pass for them. And we'll be posting flyers and other such advertisements for the dance. That's it from student council. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much for the report. Any questions or comments on the student? Okay. Hearing none, we move on to public comment. This evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Helen John.
Thank you all tonight for your time, and thank you for your service. I do want to give hats off to the high school. They are doing a real life program through Junior Achievement coming up in February. And it sounds like it's a really great program, so I think it's awesome to see what's going on with them like that. Tonight, I wanted to talk a bit about the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Caucus here at the high school. How many of you board members are aware of that club? Would you please raise your hand? I'll say, for students who are transgender, I really feel for these kids. I haven't walked in their shoes. I have no idea what it's like to feel like you're someone in your own body. I would imagine it's one of the toughest things that they've ever gone through, and one of the toughest things that families have probably ever gone through. They really deserve all our kindness and compassion we can give them. Adolescence and puberty can be one of the hardest times in our lives. Now, we've all been there, at least here. Right? We can remember how tough it is. Our bodies are changing. It can be tough feeling comfortable with those changes and feeling comfortable in their own, in your own bodies. Same with this idea of bodies developing. Do you know the rational part of our brains isn't fully developed until about age 25 or so? Quoting from the Stanford Medicine Children's Health Hospital website, "No matter how smart teens are, or how well they scored on the SAT or AAT, good judgment isn't something that they can excel in, or at least not yet. The rational part of a teen's brain isn't fully developed and won't be until age 25 or so." And continuing to quote from their website, "Adults and teen brains work differently. Adults think with the prefrontal cortex, the brain's rational part. This is the part of the brain that responds to situations with good judgment and awareness of long-term consequences. Teens process information with the amygdala. This is the emotional part. In teens' brains, the connections between the emotional part and the decision-making center are still developing, and they often develop at a different rate. They're likely to have overwhelming emotional input when making decisions. If you've been around a teenager who's made a bad decision, you've probably heard them say, 'I don't know what I was thinking,' and that is a totally honest, true answer. Couple that with peer pressure, the desire to fit in, wanting to be liked or accepted and popular on social media, it's even tougher for kids to make rational decisions. They aren't thinking as much as they are feeling. This understanding about teens' brains is crucial as we think about the best way to help these kids cope if they're transgender. The fact that a rational part of the teen's brain isn't fully developed means they're not fully equipped to make decisions related to being transgender. A parent is the best person to counsel and help a child who thinks they might be transgender, not the school, not a teacher, but a parent. No one knows a child better and loves that child more than their parents. The responsibility of counseling, supporting, guiding, and helping those children live with their parents, not with the school, and not with any teacher. I have some concerns about the club. The club goes against year policy 824. The guidelines of this policy state, "Adults shall establish and maintain appropriate personal boundaries with students and not engage in any behavior that is prohibited by the policy or that creates the appearance of prohibited behavior." Again, adults shall not conduct any behavior that creates the appearance of prohibited behavior. Some prohibited conduct includes sexual remarks, sexual comments, personal comments about a student's body, disclosing personal, sexual, family, employment concerns, or other private matters to honor more students, telling a student personal secrets, or sharing personal secrets with a student. And then adults who aren't guidance, counseling, best psychologists, or social workers. Additional prohibited conduct includes encouraging students to confide their personal or family problems in their relationships. Now, I can't say what's specifically going on in the club, obviously. I never attended a meeting. But with the word "sexualities" in the name, logical to think that they're talking about some sexual matters. So for those of you who are aware, how can a club like this be initiated or get started if it goes against the policy? And if it goes against the policy, then will it get disbanded? Here's the thing, the kids in the club, they need our love, our kindness, and our compassion. They're going through one of the toughest times in their lives. They're on a path that leads to life-changing decisions that can't be undone. No matter what you hear from the Trevor Project, no matter what you hear from W. P. Puberty blockers are reversible. They limit growth in height, they limit the accumulation of calcium in the bones, fertility, they can lead to painful joints and boing, joints as the kids get older, and irreparable fertility as they get older. Surgeries can't be reversed. This isn't going to, this club isn't going to give the kids the help they need. It's going to push them down a life-changing path that can't be undone. The club goes against the policy 824. So I ask you to disband it and do it now before any more harm is done. Thank you for your time.
Great. We move on to reports.
There was a correspondent.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I'm actually right, correspondence. I have a letter here from the Keystone State Literacy Association. It's short, I'll read the letter. Dear Upper Adams School District, the Keystone State Literacy Association Board, the 2022 Keystone State Literacy Association and Chair, Conference Chairperson Franny Thomas and the KSLA Conference Committee would like to sincerely thank you for providing the money and possible classroom coverage for your educators to attend our exceptional literacy conference. Your literacy commitment to your students and educators is extraordinary. Your educators increased their professional development, acknowledge, knowledge by learning from prominent leaders in the field of education and exceptional authors who write wonderful books for preschool through high school-aged students. Also, it was a fantastic way to network with other educators in the state who teach the same subject or grade level, and the exhibitors brought an excellent variety of classroom materials to increase student literacy knowledge in a very meaningful and fun way. Sincerely, Franny Thomas, the KSLA Chairperson. I don't know anything more about that, so if you have any questions, I'd like to direct those to the superintendent.
I was just wondering what the Keystone State Literacy Association is doing. We've been talking a little bit about what it is and how bigger it is.
The Keystone State Literacy Association is the state counterpart to the International Reading Association, which is the national component. So they promote literacy throughout the United States, throughout the world, actually. They, as the letter stated, they support vendors and they work with vendors to come up with more innovative ways to teach literacy. They can do research, they put into practice various techniques and provide case studies so school districts can make better decisions when they are looking at and assessing programs for review.
Do they have any, any involvement in the curriculum? Or, when you're talking about literacy, do they, do they work with the American Library Association, or how does?
Not so much the library association, they're more on the instruction end.
Ah, okay.
So how best to teach, what materials, that would be the curriculum tie-in, most likely the materials to support, that's instruction in the classroom, but not necessarily telling the district exactly what the curriculum should be.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now we move on to reports. And our first report is the PSBA report. Dr. P.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Okay, our top story tonight is that there's a new sheriff in town, and his name's Josh Shapiro. And that is an educational issue because since we have a new governor as of today, there will be a new Secretary of Education. And Governor Shapiro has nominated Khalid Muammar. I don't know the guy personally, and I don't know how to say his name, so I apologize to the tape if I got that wrong. But in any case, this is of interest to us, of course, because whoever is the Secretary of Education is going to help to set education policy for the next several years. This particular individual, I would like to point out, got his undergraduate degree at ship, his master's at Penn State, and then his ED at Penn, I say for the benefit of Dr. Dahl, who is a fellow proud alumnus. And he's an interesting guy. He started teaching in Scotland, PA, and he has worked his way up the ranks that way and has been superintendent of a variety of districts, right? From very constrained districts to very, to rather privileged ones. And in 2021, he was named Superintendent of the Year by the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, and I like to refer to as Danty Passa. But in any case, I don't know a lot about the guy, but I thought that was worthy of mention. It is, of course, important to note that any potential Secretary of Education is going to need to be confirmed by the Pennsylvania Senate. So that's for your information. A couple other items of interest, there are a couple of possibilities for, for board members to advocate, for example, at Advocacy Day, which is April 18th. That information is there in the notes for you if you are interested in participating in that. There is the COSBA. So we, to me, this is a rather new, nice, long acronym. Yeah, thanks. You could tell I was, I was struggling, it's been a long day. But in any case, I have the, the information there for you as well. There's information about school security issues I think people will find of interest, and all of the relevant links are in the notes, which are, of course, available to the public via our, our website, or I should say Agenda Manager. The last item I do want to mention just very briefly is there was a story in WITF on Friday noting that starting next school year, Pennsylvania schools will have a new career and technical education option to offer students K through 12 education. The program is just, I'm quoting directly here, "The program is just one of the many ways the state is responding to a teacher shortage that's created cascading staffing challenges across the Commonwealth." They're very quick to point out that they're not saying that a senior in high school is going to come out teaching in our schools, there would still be the same process of college education and certification. My own grandmother, 100 years ago, had to do that before she went back to the same one-room schoolhouse to teach. But, but this is an attempt to interest high school students. I know we have some high school students interested in being teachers. Thank God. Bless you, child. But this, though, though this is a good initiative, and I'm in favor of it as much as I know of it, I would like to point out that it's, it's an attempt to address a significant issue. I think the numbers that I have for Pennsylvania college graduates is that in 2010, some 15,000 graduating college students in Pennsylvania received teaching certificates compared to less than 5,500 in, 10 years later in, in 2020. This is a huge problem. And this program isn't a silver bullet in this regard, but at least it's a, it's a first step of acknowledging the profundity of a problem that in the long term puts all of our children and our children's children's education in peril. I do have to say, I think in the last 10 years, we have seen a lot of politicization, can we say that? No, the English professor will not say that. We've seen education used as a, as a political tool. We've also seen all sorts of problems brought on by the pandemic, to be fair, that would have an impact on people wanting to enter teaching. Funding for teaching often is stagnant, as we know. It often does not keep up with the rate of inflation. We need to do better, not just to get kids interested in teaching, although that's a wonderful first step, but show me the money. We have to put our, our money where our mouth is. It is important that teachers be paid more than a living wage, or else as college graduates, they're going to find other, more profitable lines of work. And that is not just a potential disaster for students moving forward, but it's a loss to those young teachers who may never find themselves as fully fulfilled as they will from a life in the classroom. And I'll say that for Susan, she's not here. But in any case, that's, Mr. Vice President, is my report.
Questions or comments? I would, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'd like to rephrase what I think I heard about teachers' pay. I think, for me, a better wording of that is, we don't want future teachers. Teaching is a calling. It's not a job. People become teachers for a, because they're driven to do this. And we want to make sure that teachers are adequately compensated so that we don't force them to leave their calling just to make a living wage. I, for me, that's a nuanced difference, but.
You're not putting words into my mouth. I would go further, though, and say that when my grandmother went from the tiny one-room schoolhouse in Canton, New York, to Aniyana Normal School and came back to, to teach there for the first part of her career, she was one of the most respected members of that community. And as a matter of fact, when I go there to visit, like, like I'm a, I'm a Gifford, and, and people know who that is, and they know who my grandmother was. And I'm also afraid, not just in terms of the compensation that we offer students, but the, the teachers, but the respect and the dignity that such noble calling should by its very nature.
I just didn't want to, to leave the impression that money makes a good teacher. Good teachers are good teachers regardless of the money, but we don't want them to be going somewhere else because they're not being adequately taken care of.
Preaching to the choir, brother. I, I will say, however, as, as a lifetime educator, you know, money does help in terms of resources for giving our students their best.
We can get into the motivators and demotivators some other time. Thus ends tonight's lesson. Any other questions for Dr. P? All right, we move on to FRN, Mr. Otowski.
All right, I'll make it quick. This is the House-elected Representative Kevin McCarthy of California as the House Speaker. This was after quite a contentious vote on the House floor. But all is said and done, and now we're off to defining the committee chairs and subcommittees. So Representative Virginia Fox of Virginia will chair the Committee on Education Workforce. When I was going through subcommittee assignments, I had not seen those as defined when I wrote this. So still some items up in the air there in terms of assignments. Next item on our list is, it's been some time, you know, we're in January, but last month, the omnibus spending bill did pass. We talked about that a little bit last month. But that includes some substantial increases to education funding, not as much as what was in President Biden's request, but an increase nonetheless. And then I, speaking of teacher pay, there was a bill introduced to the floor by Representative Wilson of Florida to set a minimum salary for teachers at $60,000. This would come with, with the hopes that there would be some grants to back this up, of course. So the bill is, and introduced to the floor, and that's where it's sitting now. To be honest, I, I think the likelihood of it passing is fairly slim, but wanted to bring that to your attention. And I'll close there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on the FRN report? All right, we move on to the LIU report. Dr. Dahl.
A few things to note. The general operating budget for the 2023-2024 school year was approved for submission to the district, so we'll be taking a look at that and what kind of impact. I think it has a very minimal impact for us this year, but we'll be looking at that and including it in our budgeting process. The IU Health and Safety Plan was renewed every six months to continue to meet the requirements. We will bring our plan to the board next month to have it voted on. The recent meeting with the school nurses, we are not planning to change anything. We haven't changed anything. I think the last two times it's been brought to the school board, except for the date. So we'll be bringing yours forward as well next month. And then the office calendar for the 23-24 school year was adopted at the IU. The next meeting is scheduled for February the 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, and that is the IU report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Dahl on the LIU report? All right, we go on to federal programs. Mr. Alvin.
Good evening, everyone. Just two things this evening. One, it is funding adjustment time coming up here in February, hopefully February. Last year was a little delayed, much due to the stress of the tops and I, but for what funding adjustments, for the, for a review, we get an estimate for title funding in July. It's their best guess, if you will, and then the hard numbers come in, and then in February, they give us the hard numbers, and we have to go back and just adjust the grant to make sure those numbers equal what the hard numbers are. So it's kind of like a balancing of the checkbook, if you want to make that kind of an analogy for the grant. Typically, we do lose money, so we're careful not to overspend until February, and then we make those adjustments so we're not overspending. The second item is, on Friday, February 3rd, I'll be heading up the road to St. Francis for my annual visit for their audit. Sounds worse than it is, it's more of a conversation and interview with the staff up there, just to make sure they're doing their job for supporting kids that have reading concerns, because we do give them $3,000-ish to help their kids with reading that would go to Big Lebon Elementary if they came back to the district. That is an annual requirement.
Just for clarification, we don't give them the money, it's pass-through money.
Correct. Yeah, your title, title money, correct.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Alvin? Okay, thank you. Next, there's no, no Cumberland Perry Report or Fund Advisory Report this evening, so we move on to the administrative, administration, administrative reports. So does anyone have any comments or questions?
I have a.
I looked to you.
My favorite comment. So just a few comments. Mr. Brewer, I am so disappointed that I missed the Rachel's Challenge presentation because I'm sick, but can you tell us a little bit more, some of the highlights?
Sure. So Rachel's Challenge is a pro-kind campaign, and they present across the country. It's a, unfortunately, a very tragic incident to happen back in the 90s in Palma, and Rachel Scott was the very first casualty in that tragedy. Her father, as a result of that tragedy, created Rachel's Challenge. And as I said, they travel across the country and they present to schools about being kind, and they present to students five challenges. The challenges are dream big and believe yourself, be kind to others, practice positive gossip, show appreciation to those that you love, and be the answer.
That's great.
So that was the message given to our children, our ninth-grade students that day. It was a full day of, and a really powerful message for our students.
I'm, I'm aware of the programming, was very interested in it a couple of years ago, but I've never seen it firsthand. But you, you do have follow-up committees, is that what I understand?
Correct. Yes, we've, out of that, we've created the Friends of Rachel Club, and that was a result of our afternoon work with the presenters and the leadership direction that they gave us on how the things would be.
Right. About how many students?
We had 70 students meet that afternoon.
Really?
Between 7th, 8th, and 9th grade.
Good for you.
And we worked in groups for about 90 minutes on different things, and allowing those students to have a voice and how we can practice.
Was that just the middle school?
It was the 7th, 8th, and 9th grade.
Okay. Oh, wow, that's cool.
And I, I did attend the first session. It was, it was very well done.
Yeah, inspiring, I would imagine. So, and also, I wanted to say to Ms. Graham, congratulations also to Cody Epperson and Ryan Jackson. I think that's fantastic. Happy for them in that award, and also the many, many ways that our students contributed to the State Fair Farm Show. It's fantastic, and I love this display. That is really stunning. So, thank you. Yeah. We also had another student, right? Who was involved?
Yes, Kristen Engelbert was chosen through a vote, on my vote, to sing at the National Anthem of the Art Show.
So, I wish she would come and sing for us sometime.
Gabby has a copy of the song that went.
Oh, yes. We did get, yes, though, didn't we?
The cover of it was by Ryan Jackson, and the inside picture was Cody Epperson. On the back of it, it talks about a little bit about.
That's so great. Great idea. So, and that's it. Oh, yes, one more thing. I wanted to comment of Josh's report. Just, thank you, thank you, thank you for the new student filter. That's a big help to parents. And number five, would you please explain a little bit more about what the MFA license is? What does that provide for us?
So, the multi-factor authentication license was, is the essential first thing that we need to allow users to actually be prompted to factor for email or computer login. So we need that in order to do the project at all. So that was finally delivered from the IU last week.
You said it's multifunction?
Multi-factor.
Multi-factor. You know when you log on, you have to send a text to your phone?
Oh, yes.
That's MFA.
Yes, got it. All these tech people. That's great. I thank you very much for all your work. That's all for me.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a couple. Mr. Kerstetter, since this meeting is being live streamed, perhaps you'd like to stand up and talk about the kindergarten roundup?
Absolutely. So, anyone who has a child who will turn five years of age by September 1st, we are getting ready to start getting, preparing for our kindergarten registration. Our first event is February 7th, 6 o'clock a big ago. I mentioned we have our kindergarten roundup, informal night, prepare to bring your children out. Meet kindergarten teachers, do some activities with current kindergartners and their parents, and just learn a little bit about our school and kind of what kindergarten is all about. So, spread the word, friends, family members, neighbors who might have children, ready for school, we'd love to see them all this up.
And can you also give me an idea, what percent of your parents were at the parent teacher?
Parent teacher conferences, I think we were right around 95%.
Thank you. On to Mrs. Buckley. Congratulations to Garrett Melhorn, Jaden Miller, Hunter Cro- Ross, Gross, Gross, sorry, Cody Hawbaker, and Mickey Slode. They all answered 1,000 math questions.
1,000 math questions. All of them were either.
I haven't answered 1,000 math questions in my entire life.
Yeah, they worked hard. They can do it today, and they can do it at weekends as well, I think.
Well, anyway, congratulations to them, and also to Garrett and Jaden, who apparently is, out of 1,800, 1,900 students, they were in the top. One was 27th, and one was 40th in that group. It's pretty amazing. Mrs. Graham, could you talk about the elective fair a little bit?
Yes. This year, our guidance counselors organized an elective fair. Each elective area, this is English, so I, languages, had a table set up, and a couple of our clubs did as well. And the upcoming ninth grader, they sent to ninth grade, visited, and it was very organized, organized by small groups, and then we had high school leaders of each group, and we had high school students man each of the booths, and they were there, I think, for six minutes, and did a little presentation on what the elective is. It was like a live course selection guide.
Terrific.
And then we also from ninth into tenth grade, we did it for our high school leaders as well. And I think it was, it was a, it was a really nice thing. It was the first year that we did it, and I saw Mrs. Warner, our guidance counselor, for reading that. And it was like the ER high school kids as well in this leadership position.
I would agree. I did, Mrs. Graham shared with me and was able to come down and take a look, and it was great. The kids were very, like, attentive. Mrs. Warner did a great job, and all of our teachers, you know, that helped with that did a fantastic job, and also the student leaders that helped to explain. It was interesting, because each of the kids had a paper that they went from station to station, but they were using the backs of other students to take notes at each session. So you could tell they were really engaged and involved, and it provided a different perspective that we're not reading it out of a course selection guide. They actually got to live and breathe a little bit and see examples. So, great job.
That's a great idea.
I know. I can second how helpful that would have been, because when I came into high school, and I saw all the electives I had to choose from, I had no idea what any of them were, what they entailed. So, having this as a resource to use, that would have been really helpful. So I agree that it was a really good idea, and I'm sure it would have been very helpful and appreciated by.
There's a positive vote from your customer base.
That's important.
Right, that's right. All right, Mr. Cantrell, Mrs. Janzik understood this, but I don't. In your report, there was a sentence that said, implement a new student filter that allows restrictions out of the district at home. I don't know what that means.
So, to correct that, students are onsite here at the school district, they're filtered. When they go home, they're filtered the same way. There was an old application that was in place for that, but it's going away, and it's becoming.
So there's no inappropriate use of district computers at home?
Correct, yeah, essentially.
Mrs. Janzik understood that, but I had a little trouble with it. Great, thank you. Mr. showers, can you talk about Canor Creations a little bit? That was new to me.
Yeah, Canor Creations is a group working with, it's our TDC's classroom and our life school's classroom, working in combination with transition coordinator, Mr. Crowder, and they create business opportunities for students, give them real-life experience in the work world. Students actually have to apply for their jobs they want to do. So if they want to be designer, they have to apply for that job. They want to be productionist, they apply for that job, and they're raising money if you can have money for other opportunities down the road. Do you have anybody that wants a shirt design?
I would, if anybody has not had the opportunity and you have interest, I would encourage you to hunt down D. Crowder and talk to her about what she does with the special needs students and finding them jobs that are going to translate into post-secondary work for these kids. In some cases, their prospects are not very good, and she really does an amazing job. She really and truly does. Thank you. To Mr. Graham, congratulations to Joey Nye and Devin Ponse for their recent athletic achievements. And my last comment is for you, Mrs. Hobbs. Can you explain these balances? What am I supposed to take from that?
Okay, on the second page of my report, I attached an agenda manager. So, in September of 2022, I gave an update to the board regarding outstanding balances and food service. These are balances that are outstanding, meaning that there is a debt to food service. I relooked at that at the end of December, and that has increased by 25% or about $4,000. So at this time, food service is in the negative with outstanding balances of $19,102. So you can see the breakdown. I also included the application for anyone to complete for free and reduced meals. If you're having any struggles, we ask that you do complete that to help, to see if we can assist on providing some assistance with lunches. As a reminder, breakfast is still free. That started back in October, and on average, across the whole district, we're doing about 2,000 breakfasts a week, and those are free to students.
Okay, thank you. So, I think that wraps it up for administrative reports. We move on to the superintendent's report.
A few items of noting that are listed. We're going to speak a little bit later. I believe there's going to be some conversation between the board about the locker rooms and team rooms. We had a presentation by our LPS back at the January session, and we're looking for some more conversation about that before we move forward with this potential capital project. The comprehensive plan for the district, we continue to keep that at a forefront, and I will be meeting with Julie Ramig to take a look at some of the survey data that was gathered from the school community, and I'm hoping to have a conversation with her very shortly, so that we can begin to identify how to move forward with some of the information from that communication survey, and how to better make some decisions on how we communicate with our stakeholders within our district. The greenhouse, I don't have any current updates, but if you've driven by during the daytime, you probably noticed that the structure is standing at this point, and I believe utilities was the last conversation I heard being discussed. So, the hookup of utilities would be coming very shortly if some of that hasn't already started.
I think it has. Heard some electrical humming over there.
Okay. The upper-end school district social worker actually began. We were able to meet with her today, Melissa Calderon, and I know that she was drinking from a fire hose today with information, but it was very organized between Joe Albin and Brad Showers. They were, you know, had a plan in place for her to obtain her badge, computer, and just began to become acclimated with the district. She did do a visit at each school today, so thank you, Joe, and thank you, Brad, for your time and efforts today to help her feel comfortable and welcome. I know that she was back gathering some office supplies from the office, so she's beginning to make herself at home, and I'm sure she'll be a fantastic asset to the district as we begin to work with her as a social worker. The last item I'd like to talk about is the Lincoln Intermediate Unit had there, and this was back in December, they had their first annual legislative forum. There were a number of representatives that were present, or people that were representing different representatives. Actually, Seth Grove was the only one who was actually there in person. I felt kind of bad that he was taking, you know, a number of the questions from us as superintendents. So there were superintendents from Franklin Adams and York Counties that were sharing a number of topics with them, and one of them was actually a conversation that was just held a little bit earlier about teachers and the shortage of teachers and the movement of teachers, et cetera. And there was some pretty frank conversations that things have to change. Something big is going to have to change to begin to attract teachers to the educational arena of that particular career. So I listed a number of other items that were discussed, anything from cyber charter spending to Act 55, which we, as a district, are beginning to outline how that's going to impact us. It's a number of other mandated trainings that we will be required to participate in in the future. So that is my report at this point.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Dahl?
We just have two. I'm just curious if we'll get a chance to meet Mrs. Calderon. Is that her name, Calderon?
Yes, Calderon. So we will, we can bring her forward at some point to meet the board.
And where is her office?
Her office is in the, in the nurse's office, back part of the nurse's office, behind her office.
Oh, okay, okay. And then, in regard to the legislative forum, a lot of times, with my impression, whenever I've gone to talk to representatives, is that they take a lot of notes, and they listen, and they, mhm, mhm. But did you get any sense of feedback about your questions? Was there a good give and take?
There was a good conversation back and forth, but you're absolutely right. It will take follow-up. It will take time to meet with representatives and sharing, you know, concerns. So I would imagine at some point, we would have some type of follow-up, even if it's locally with some of our legislators.
Okay, super. Thank you. That's all.
All right. All right, we move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Albin?
Item 12.1, recommend approval of the financial report ending 12/31/22 and the condensed board summary report for 12/22 as per the attached documents.
Second. There's a motion before the board to approve the three reports listed in your agenda at item 12.1, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Michael, you're on mute.
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Albin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 12.2, recommend approval of the Food Service Fund Statement of Operations ending 12/31/22 as per the attached document.
Second. A motion before the board to approve the Food Service Fund Statement, item 12.2 in your agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Albin?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda item 12.3, recommend approval of the Student Activity Fund ending 12/31/22 as per the attached document.
Second.
Motion before the board to approve the Student Activity Fund reports ending 12/31/22, item 12.3 in your agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Albin?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albin. Before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, does anybody have anything they want to have pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately? Okay, I would like to pull out item 13.1.1, the Budget Opt-Out Resolution. So, with the exception of that item, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved.
Second. A motion before the board to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 13.1.1, and it's been seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like to, for the record, offer a note of gratitude to the individuals who submit donations. So that includes the Moms for Liberty, who provided some books, Susan and Richard Kraus, Time Cider Mill, Jeff Schaefer, Realty, and Friends of Bear Mountain, and the Hollabah Brothers, who all provided funds for the Education Science Lab, agriculture, mobile agricultural education science lab.
Let the minutes so show. Good catch, thank you. Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Albin?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
I pulled out 13.1.1 not to have any, I certainly don't disagree with it, but it's a very important document, and I wanted to make sure that the board recognized that and didn't just get buried. So do I hear a motion to approve the Budget Opt-Out Resolution for 23-24?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion before the board to approve the Opt-Out Resolution, item 13.1.1 in your agenda. It's been seconded. Any questions? Hearing none. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Albin?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Ms. Graham?
Ms. Graham, you on mute?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
All right, we go to committee reports. Finance, Mr. Albin?
Item 14.1.1 is recommend approval of the 2021-2022 final audit as per the attached document from Coconour, Ern, Mizr, and.
Second.
There's a motion before the board to approve the 21-22 audit. Item 14.1.1 in your agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? The auditors came and briefed the treasurer, myself, and somebody else was there, and Mr. Everett, with the results of the audit, and Mrs. And Mrs. Hobbs briefed the whole board in December.
I'd like to commend Mrs. Hobbs for what seemed to be a great audit, very smooth, and accolades from the auditor.
Right.
You can't, you can't do that.
They had, they had me at the material.
Yeah.
Any further comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Onto agenda item 14.1.2, recommend approval to accept the following donations. Ten umbrellas from Shoe Orthodontics for the Bigleville Elementary School to be used during arrival and dismissal on rainy days. Also $2,500 from Blackbald Giving Fund on behalf of Pella, Rose Green Foundation, Pella Corporation, and its donors to Bigleville High School.
Second.
There's a motion before the board to accept the donation with the agenda 14.1.2, it's been seconded, any discussion? Just let the minutes show the gratitude of this district and school or the generosity of our community. Further discussion, hearing none, we will go for a roll call, please.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 14.1.3, the 22, 2023, 2024 Lincoln Intermediate Unit 12 generate, general operating budget, recommend approval for Lincoln Intermediate Operating Budget per the attached documents. Document.
Second.
Motion before the board to approve LIU budget for 23/24, item 14.1.3 in your agenda, it's seconded. Any discussion?
As Dr. Dahl mentioned earlier, it's stagnant from last year. It's down slightly, it looks like to me.
Three dollars.
Three dollars.
Yeah.
I was gonna say two, but.
It's all in one place.
Two dollars.
Hearing no further discussion, have a roll call, please.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
You do not need to read that paragraph on this.
Thank you. Item 14.1.4, this is the appointment of the Adams County Treasurer to collect taxes on the school's behalf, given that, that Mr. Shriver, tax collector, moved out of the area. So this, this motion will approve Adams County to collect taxes on Upper Adams School District's behalf. I move to approve that.
Second.
There's a motion before the board to approve, item 14.1.4, to approve the appointment of the Adams County Treasurer to collect Bendersville taxes because they no longer have their own tax guy. It's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Agenda item 14.1.5, information and discussion regarding the financing for the proposed renovation, locker rooms, team rooms, and the north gym.
Let me preface the discussion by saying, we were presented last meeting with the plans, the rough plans, well, they were more than rough, on what's going on, and we agreed as a board then to take a couple of weeks to think about it. We're gonna have a discussion tonight. We're not gonna vote on approving or disapproving, this is an information item. And either at a special board meeting in two weeks or the regular February board meeting, we'll have the final vote to go ahead or not go ahead. So with that as a preface, floor up for discussions. The finances is probably, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that the fifty-year-old locker rooms need some attention. Summarize our, the financial, financial position.
Sure, I'm gonna reference back to the treasurer's report that was mentioned earlier this evening that's attached to the agenda. And if you're looking at that, we're going to specifically look at the line that says Tizlaf 2019, a bond for the Avenue project. That was one of the money that was borrowed for the intermediate school renovation. Currently, we have a remaining balance, and you're gonna see that a closing value of 2.988 million. And we are estimating that we could have a few more expenses out there related to the intermediate project. And then looking at the estimated renovation that was presented two weeks ago of a little bit over 2.8 million. I'm estimating that after those expenses, we still have a remaining positive balance out of the Avenue project fund of about $100,000 remaining.
So the Avenue, you're talking about the Orangeville project.
That's correct.
So there's 2.988 million in the Tizlaf account right now. This project will cost about 2.87 million. And then there's, there's a fifteen, fifteen to thirty thousand dollars of potential more expenses for the Orangeville project, leaving a balance of in the neighborhood of $100,000 in the Tizlaf account. So, so that's the financial situation.
And if I may just add, the funds that are left over from the intermediate project, that Tizlaf fund, it needs to be used for renovations. It's not money that can be put into the general fund. So I was just, I just wanted to make that clear as well.
There's additional money in the Capital Reserve Fund to the tune of, right now of about $138,000 for other capital projects. Some of that's already been earmarked for projects. And as I have stated in the past, we have in the past budgeted about $325,000 a year for capital projects. We haven't had to do that in the last few years for lots of different reasons. And I don't, where does the, maybe it's been used on these other projects? The Bendersville sale?
That has already been used.
Been consumed at the roof and all that other stuff.
That is correct.
So, so that's the financial situation. The project, we can do the project without incurring further debt, is the bottom line. So the discussion on finances is, we can't, there's not much more to say than that.
We borrowed the money, is that correct?
Yes.
So the interest rate on that? I do not know the interest rate. It would be all from the bond.
We have several bonds, four or five bonds, and they have different interest rates. But this year, we're paying a balloon, this year or last year? This year.
This year.
We paid a balloon payment on the bonds.
Okay.
So next year, our bond payment will be significantly less, like a half a million dollars less. Cindy, we have set aside 2.82 mills over the years. And I call it our amortization table. It's a lot like your mortgage at home and so forth. And we have several columns, which are different bond fundings, and they mesh together, and that 2.82 mills covers that. With the exception of this year, we were like half a million dollars short. And we knew that was coming, and it was intentional in a sense. Made the rest of it work. So the 2.82 mills that we have set aside for our debt service is what we use to cover our bonds.
Right.
That's why we had the assigned account for debt service anticipation.
And the renovations are more than just the locker rooms, right? Are you doing the office?
No, team rooms. Now, the, or she was at the first meeting and the other second. The high school office and all that other stuff, that's been taken off because we couldn't afford it.
Twenty-one and a half, okay.
The priority has always been the locker rooms and the team rooms, which haven't been.
Okay.
Touched, except as Mr. Everett pointed out, paint.
We gave him a coat of paint about 2021, you're, huh? It's also.
Brewed him up real good.
Hey, I know ya. That paint's holding them together. It's also important to note that we gained two classrooms with this project as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which Mrs. Graham has explained.
True.
And some storage space.
And some storage space, yeah. But the classrooms is, in my view, pretty important stuff.
And this is not a summer project, is that what I understand?
Schedule to be determined.
Uh-huh.
It won't.
I think it's October versus September.
There was.
Depends with the approval process here, and then we would have to come back and take a look at, do we have to phase the project and do certain parts at certain times if it's during the school year when kids are here?
Okay.
Would most likely happen.
Is there no problem with the supply cost? I mean, for, you know, get supplies?
Those were figured into the.
Okay.
The estimates that we received.
High estimates.
Yeah, like twenty percent.
The reason the schedule is a little unknown is, number one, we gotta find a contractor that'll do the work. Number two, he's gotta have the parts necessary. But even the architect that came and talked to us indicated that the supply chain problems that have, we've all experienced in various sundry projects in our personal lives are starting to ease.
How, is there a way that we can avoid any cost overruns in favor of renovating things rather than building? Are there any guarantees that the contractor, the architect, the engineers can give the school district that this, you know, 2.8, almost 2.9 million dollar project isn't gonna turn into a 3.4 million dollar project? They're probably dependent on material costs, but it seems like from what we're hearing, material costs are going down. So.
I think, especially about the future. But I know he built.
I think it was a higher percentage.
He had a contingency in the estimate to cover that kind of, kind of thing.
You really won't know, dear, until it goes on for bid and it comes back, the actual estimate comes back. And then if it's still too high, you can go into a process called value engineering. It quite simply means, what do you wanna cut? Okay, do you wanna give this up for this? Do you wanna change this around? Do you wanna change your locker arrangement? Do you wanna wait till you can get the lockers at a more reasonable price and then put them in? It's all sorts of things.
In addition to that, if this project is estimated, as you point out, of almost 2.9 million, and the contract, you know, we go out for bid and the bids come back three and a half million, for instance, we can say, we're not doing it. We're not, we're not, when we vote on approving this project here in two weeks or four weeks, that's not, that's not a go-no-go. As the estimates come back and they're, they're higher than we think we can afford, then we can pull the plug.
Yeah, and maybe another conversation, like, do we get our biggest bang for the money we have remaining for the locker room and not do team rooms? So there's still some flexibility.
Beats to your, right.
Do we gain anything by voting in two weeks versus four weeks, i.e. time to get a jump on supplies and semen and all that?
Short answer to that question is yes. And I would be in favor of having a special board meeting in two weeks, but I also don't want the board to feel they're being rushed into doing this, making a decision. We wanna do this in very systematic, deliberate fashion. And we've now been talking about it enough. I feel comfortable voting in two weeks, but that's, I'm, I'm just sitting in this chair tonight. I'm not trying to dictate how, how things are gonna go.
Well, in two weeks or four weeks, we'll basically just be voting to go out for bids, correct?
That is correct.
And then get those bids in, and then we can take an assessment whether we wanna go ahead with the project.
Right, but I think what James was getting at is, if you, if we wait another month and we get the bids and we like the bids, we push the problem down the road another month. And is that necessary?
Right.
You're never quite sure what's out there that's gonna give you problems as far as supply chain, whether it's lockers, whether it's, you can use the example of plasterboard, that they have trouble getting that, bathroom fixtures and so forth. The longer runway we have with that, the better chance they'll have to shop.
Okay, any further discussions this evening on this topic? Can we get a, an idea that we can give Jim Lady as to whether we wanna try, have a special board meeting in two weeks or not?
Oh, a special board meeting or just a voting board meeting?
Well, it would be, but a voting board meeting would be a special board meeting.
Right, right, okay, but it would be the same night and so forth.
Yes, well, yeah, it would be right after the.
It's already advertised as such.
It's already advertised, so there's no.
That's what I thought, yes.
Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what.
Michael, okay.
Michael, you still there?
Yes.
Any comments?
I'm, I'm good with having a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think that concludes the Treasurer's Finance Committee, thank you. Do you need to move on to personnel?
All right, thank you. I'm gonna bundle these into two separate motions.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the professional listing under 14.2.2, the supplemental contracts listing under 14.2.4, and the volunteer listing under 14.2.5.
Um.
I should clarify that it's not listings, but the items.
Okay, 'cause 14.2.2 includes a resignation.
Correct. So this includes the, under the sabbatical leave, approving the sabbatical leave for Shelley Combe, our fifth grade teacher from November through the end of the 2022 school year, 2022, 23 school year, approving the resignation of Jessica Jones, our learning support teacher, the retirement of Sherry Holland, our Yale teacher, and new posting advertised business positions. And then also to recommend the approval of the supplemental contract for Jennifer Peglow as a co-advisor. And then, of course, the volunteer listings, there's two individuals on the volunteer list.
So.
That's a motion to second, right?
There's a motion before the board to approve the items listed in your agenda at 14.2.2, 14.2.4, and 14.2.5. And it has been seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanna comment that the district really will be missing a very special teacher, Sherry Holland.
Mm-hmm.
And we wish her best in her retirement years.
I would echo that comment. She's been very instrumental and an advocate of all of our Yale students for many years. She will be missed.
Anything else? Since there's contracts involved with this motion, we'll need a roll call, please.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
Yes.
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mr. Fee?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, my final motion is to approve the other contracted services under 14.2.6. These are to add individuals to their respective listings. So we have listings for G-Force, Kelly Education Permanent Map. So, we have listings for G-Force, Kelly Education Permanent Staff, sorry, Kelly Education, no, the Kelly Education Support Staff Substitutes, and the listing for, maximum employee listing for, I believe that's nursing.
There's a motion before the board to approve the actions in the agenda contained in items fourteen point two point six, other contracted services, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we have nothing under property, transportation, a little bit unusual, but as the acting chair this evening, I will recommend approval of the addition to the Jacobi Transportation Drivers List, Troy Stapleton.
Second.
Motion before the board to approve the Jacobi Transportation Drivers Listing, item fourteen point four point one in your agenda, it's been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we go to curriculum extracurricular, Mrs. Janzik.
Okay, item number fifteen point one point one is informational on the ATSI, which stands for Additional Targeted Support and Intervention. Mr. Alden?
Thank you, Mrs. Janzik. All right, this evening, Mr. Brewer and I just wanted to give you just a quick update on a communication we received from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, let's say about two weeks ago. If you go back with me in time a little bit to November, we talked about the state assessment scores and how they impacted the district, and we talked about achievement, and we talked about growth. If you remember, achievement is, did they get the answer right? And growth is, did they make a year's worth of progress? Growth is very important to us because we look at that for kids that may be significantly behind or significantly ahead. How do we determine, are we making progress with those students when they may have challenges getting the correct answer, but do they, did they make a year's worth of growth? And that's where we look at it as well. So, and if you recall, we had concerns with our achievement, especially at the middle school, we had a lot of students who had struggled with that achievement part getting the right answer. But our growth was through the, I mean, we had greens and we had blues, and blues is that more than two years beyond what they expected. So, we were very, very pleased with that. So, what the state does, my presentation in November, that presentation's going on in all the school districts across Pennsylvania. And the state looks at all that data, achievement and growth from all the school districts, and they are held accountable by the federal government to help the school districts in their state. So, every state has this charge from the federal government. So, the state has three different programs they can help schools with resources, with support, that they determine are, that could be struggling or that need extra support. They not only look at the overall numbers that I showed you, but they also look at the subgroups. Now, if you're wondering what a subgroup is, a subgroup is any group of students, like students more than twenty in a particular group. And the subgroups in Pennsylvania, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget them here for you, are mainly the ethnic groups. So, you have American Indian, Asian, Hawaiian, Black, Hispanic, White, or two or more races. They also have a subgroup for economically disadvantaged, ELL, and students with disabilities. So, they look in achievement and they look at growth for all these different subgroups. And then they have their criteria at the state level, and they decide what programs could we offer districts across the state that would benefit them, that would support either subgroups or as a whole. And for us, they reached out and say, hey, we looked at your ELL subgroup at the middle school. Looks like they're struggling, we looked at their, their past year's worth of achievement, we want to help you. We want, we want to work with you and see if we can give you some support on those for that ELL subgroup. So, Dr. Dahl, myself, Mr. Brewer, and Mr. Showers are going to go up to Patan, I think it is, next Thursday, for an overview session on what this program looks like. And the program that we qualified for was Additional Targeted Support and Intervention, ATSI. What does that look like? We're not quite sure yet, we're talking with the intermediate unit. But what it does is the state empowers the intermediate unit to work with us, and we get some, sometimes some free stuff. So, we get more professional development, we get opportunities for our teachers to attend the training, we get opportunities to have experts come in from the intermediate unit and take a look at what we're doing. And we're excited about the opportunity to hear from an outside perspective, what more can we do for this ELL population that seems to be struggling at the middle school? So, we're looking forward to working with the IU on that and the opportunities that that will bring. One of the pieces we'll be doing is setting some goals for the middle school, and we'll be updating you on those goals and working with the IU, ensuring that with you as well, that progress that we're making there. But the ELL subgroup at the middle school, we're working, qualify for that ATSI, so we're going to be working through that.
So, the additional, additional resources doesn't necessarily mean funding?
Correct, yeah, we didn't, we did not qualify for, they have three different programs that, that districts can benefit from. And the one we can benefit from, we get the support, but not the actual money. There is another program that is offered out there, but we don't get the, that also gives you a little bit of money.
Yeah, how often is this allocated?
Annually. It's, they look at the scores annually. For this particular program, we could benefit from it for three years. So, we, we'd be working with the IU in partnership.
Okay.
Why just middle school?
That's the subgroup that they were, that they identified as. So, they looked at the trends over past years. It does look like it's either stagnant or it goes down, and COVID was in there.
So, we're looking at the intermediate school kids that are going into middle school then?
It looks at last year's testers. So, this would be ninth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade this year, is what the last year's numbers were. That's not to say that's going to be our only focus group, because as a district, we, you heard what our plans are and where the areas we're concerned with. So, we have other concerns as well, but the state just wants to give us some more tools to help this particular population at the middle school.
And when do you expect it to be implemented? Next year?
We hope to have the goals and action plan ready to go, hopefully with the IU's help by summer and in place for next school year.
Okay.
Again, we're going to an orientation session next Thursday, we'll get more, I imagine we'll get more definite timelines, concrete information at that point, and maybe some more information as exactly what the qualifiers were, because we did look at the numbers when we were, it's a little ambiguous, sometimes you're scratching your head and you're like, whoa.
We all sat and we tried to figure it out, like, part of the formulas were given to us, but some of the data was not. So, I agree with Joe that next week we'll learn more.
Sure.
But again, it'll be a benefit to get some resources to help, help the middle school, middle school and to help this targeted area. Just look at it as positive, it'll help-
Absolutely.
-with some different resources to help some of our groups.
How that looked always did.
Yeah.
So, we'll see if the state, we're from the government, we're here to help, and actually treat it right.
There you go.
Bring up a question for you. You go down that road, I thought Tom would hit me, and you know, we were like, you're all right.
So, then the next item, thank you, Mr. Alden and Mr. Brewer. And the next items, I'm going to combine fifteen point one point two is a letter of agreement between the LIU and Upper Adams in partnership with Adams County Head Start for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, as per the attached document. And then item fifteen point one point three is an update to the Course Description Guide for our Ligonville High School. So, as per the-
Motion to approve?
Right, so I'm recommending approval for both of those items.
Second. There's a motion before the board to approve the letter of agreement between the district and LIU and the Course Description Guides, items fourteen, fifteen point one point two and point three in your agenda, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's nothing under athletics or other activities, so we go to policy, Mr. Ebert.
We've already approved the minutes for our policy meeting at the beginning of the meeting. We have three first read policies, eighteen twenty-seven and eight oh five point two for first read, that'll stand for the next month, we can look over, and we have five policies that have been there, and second read policies, I would ask that we approve those for inclusion in our policy book.
Second.
There's a motion before the board to approve the first, first read policy, sixteen point one, and the second read policy, sixteen point two in your agenda, and it has been seconded. Any discussions? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Ebert?
Yes.
Mr. C?
Hi.
Mrs. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Again, it's a little unusual for the chair to be making motions, but it is what it is. So, I recommend approval on item seventeen in your agenda of the Upper Adams School District, School Health Council members, as per the attached document.
Second.
Motion before the board to approve the Health Council members, per the document, has been seconded. Any discussion? I would only comment that it might have been shorter to list those not on health.
There are a lot of good names on there.
They're all good names. Okay, any relevant discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This might be a good point in the agenda for me to mention, to remind that we have an election coming up for school board members. We have four sitting members who are not seeking reelection, and we have two school board members who are, who are seeking reelection. And the first day to circulate petitions is April fourteenth, so that's a, that's a date that's, that's approaching rapidly. We move on to item eighteen on the agenda, the bills. So, I hear a motion to pay the bills.
Still moved.
Motion before the board to pay the bills listed in your agenda, item eighteen, has been seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ebert?
Yes.
Mr. C?
Hi.
Mrs. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Janzik?
Yes.
Mr. Otowski?
I'm going to abstain, my wife, Maggie, is a recipient for payment for services to the district.
Mr. Walmer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Hi.
Thank you, rushing through.
All right, there's no old business or new business, so we go to reminder of the next school board meetings, Curriculum Extracurricular Activities Committee and the Business and Operations Committee at six thirty PM on the seventh of February in this room, and the Policy Committee on the second of February at nine AM, again in this room. And the next board meeting is the twenty-first of February at seven PM. And not listing the agenda, which we just agreed to, there'll be a special board meeting following the committee meetings on the seventh of February. And I believe that concludes our agenda.
Do we have to vote on that?
Sorry?
Do we have to vote on it?
Yeah.
Now, I'll just make a point of clarification, that's three weeks from tonight, not-
Okay, yeah, typically it's two weeks, but-
It absolutely is, but-
January's a long month.
I'm just making sure.
Now, can I, yeah, you're absolutely right. With no further business or discussion, we, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. We are adjourned. Mrs. Graham, could I see you and-